Okay, we're called to order the Franklin Regional School meeting for Monday, October 3rd, 2022. We're in executive session from 6:30 to 7:40 on Forts and Al Contraction on Legal Issues.
Dr. Prano, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually going to quickly turn this over to Dr. Santamont, who will be doing, recognizing our National History Day winner, as well as our Students of the Month from the middle school. Dr. Santamont.
I first want to introduce Hamna Anzar. She was a national finalist for National History Day. As you know, every year, our 7th grade competes in the National History Day competition. And she worked hard and made it to states and then all the way to nationals. So I'm going to invite her up so she can share a little bit about her topic with you.
I'm Hamna. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak today. National History Day started as a class activity, where we were given the theme of debate and diplomacy. We had to first choose a topic related to this, and then had to decide how we would present our project. Through a documentary, exhibit board, website, research paper, or performance. I wanted to choose a topic that had meaning to me. I started by researching online, but nothing appealed to me. I then spoke with my grandfather, who has a deep knowledge of world history. He suggested looking into the Indus Water Treaty, which was necessary after the partition of the Indian subcontinent into two separate countries of India and Pakistan, which is where my parents are from. For this reason, the topic immediately interested me, and I decided to make it the focus of my project. The opportunity for each student to showcase their information in their preferred format was certainly a learning experience for us all. Each student was tasked with researching their topic, organizing their information, and presenting it in their chosen format. Having to create a research project from scratch was a new experience for us. We learned how to properly and effectively research, organize, compile, edit, and present our information. I started by watching YouTube videos about my topic, and as my research progressed, I read articles and books, and later focused on primary sources, such as newspapers and interviews. Lastly, I focused on securing interviews with experts in the field. Once I obtained all of this information, I was able to begin organizing my thoughts and writing my paper. I consulted my teachers at every step of this process for their invaluable input and guidance. After writing several drafts, I settled on a final version that was submitted to the school competition. For the regional one, I was additionally required to create and submit a process paper and an annotated bibliography. The process paper was a short outline of the project that answered a given set of questions. The annotated bibliography was a collection of my sources, with annotations explaining how and why I chose to use those sources. This part of the project was one of the most time-consuming, as it required me to write a short paragraph about every single one of my nearly 75 references. While the regional and national competitions were virtual, the state competition was held in person at the University of Scranton. One distinct difference between them was that each student was interviewed at the state competition by a panel of judges who had already thoroughly reviewed their projects. They had a strong overall understanding of the topic, and asked questions ranging from how and why a particular topic was chosen to how their project was put together. They also asked challenging questions about obscure parts of the topics. This required us to have an extremely thorough knowledge about them. This past school year, I was fortunate enough to win the state National History Day competition and advanced to nationals, where I received 3rd place in the country. This experience... This experience taught me many valuable lessons. I was able to understand on a much deeper level what the five Cs, citizenship, critical thinking, creativity, communication, and collaboration truly represent, and how important they are. I strengthened my citizenship abilities by learning how to request and conduct interviews in a professional manner. And communication with my teachers and people I interviewed was vital to my project. I had to collaborate with these people and use my critical thinking and creativity to formulate a truly unique and interesting paper. My experience with NHD was certainly one I'll never forget, and I'll always carry with me the lessons and skills I learned. I hope to be able to continue competing in NHD in the future. I know for a fact I'll be participating in the competition this year, which is under the theme of frontiers in history. I would like to sincerely thank all my teachers, especially Mr. Tressler, Mrs. Joyce, and Mrs. Corns, for always supporting and encouraging me at every step of this process. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
How do you think being able or unable to find a topic that you were really interested and really had a passion about helped you work so hard? Because it seemed like you had so much entry, so much hard work put into this, and you speak fondly of the work that you did. How did taking that approach and working with your teachers, finding a topic that you were really passionate about, make the work easier, or make you do more work than you may have if you were just assigned something in the class?
I feel like being interested in the topic you're gonna research, it always, because you're so interested in it, you always have more questions. You always want to, you always want more answers, and so because of that, your research is always gonna be more thorough, and your overall project is probably gonna be better because you have more thorough research.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
Next, I would like to invite up our Students of the Month. So at the middle school, just as a reminder, every month, our house teachers nominate two students based on a characteristic for that month. And for the month of September, the characteristic was communication. And so each house nominates two students, and then those students are recognized at the school level. And then the middle core teachers vote on that list of nominees, and then we come out with one 6th grade student, one 7th grade student, and one 8th grade student. And so for the month of September, our Students of the Month. In 6th grade, Amelia Bertucci. And in 8th grade, Natalie Wright. We're really proud of all of our students, but very proud of these young ladies for the work that they do. And I'm gonna invite them out in the hall now to get their picture taken.
Thank you, girls. Congratulations. Dr. Prano.
That concludes my report for this evening. And just so the parents know, with their children here, you do not have to stay for the entire meeting. Certainly welcome to, but I understand having a family of my own, we're approaching that time.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. We have four. Corinne Chadwick. Address, name.
Hi, my name is Corinne Chadwick. I live at 3519 Ivy Drive, Murraysville. I would like to publicly state, so it is in the minutes and on the record, so everyone can review it. This is my formal complaint, and you will all be emailed this in writing as well. I will no longer state my last name or my home address at these meetings, because you see, when word got out that I am attacking a school district, people have searched out that video, have found my home address, and now I'm receiving death threats and threats of personal visits to my home, where my children reside. My first request tonight is either A, show ID at the door, or B, when your editing, when your editor is editing videos, like was done on the August 19th video at 15:19 and 18 minutes and 21 seconds, editing out the comments from the parent who obtained a protection from abuse order, and also again at 21:14, when my husband spoke of the children leaving the building for a walkout. Maybe she could add out our, edit out our personal information as well. Why are we editing those anyway? I'm not here to play childish games. I don't care how much money anyone has or their politics. I care how our children are being treated. Why I started paying closer attention. Going back to September 13th, 2021, four boys were suspended from school for an issue on the bus that day. A group of girls from the front of the bus accused one of these boys of saying "some pretty nasty things," is what Principal Berg told me. Your boys were involved in the group, so they're suspended tomorrow. I replied, okay, well, if they misbehaved, I will certainly discuss that with them as well. I apologized for my son's behavior and accepted the punishment. On September 14th, those four kids were home suspended. The following day, September 15th, I received written notification from the school stating, "Your child," and stated their name, "used inappropriate language of a racial nature towards another student on the bus." To my dismay, I immediately requested a meeting with Mrs. Berg to discuss what exactly occurred. Had I received this notice before the suspension was served, I would not have agreed. When we met, my husb- Mrs. Berg and Officer Potter, we were informed, "The girls did not know which of your boys said it. They do look very similar, Mrs. Chadwick." I asked what exactly was said. They could not tell me what was said. In turn, I requested they changed racial slur to maybe inappropriate behavior, and was told, "I can't, it's too late. It doesn't matter anyway. This is only within the school. It won't travel within his permanent record." Let me tell you why this does matter. Those four boys have been best friends since we moved into this community. That weekend, when the kids were grounded for a bus suspension, the parents talked. The next visit with our best friend was going well, until our best friend said, "You know what your dad, what my dad called you? A racist bully." Why does that matter? Because best friend's dad was also my son's coach at the time. My son has not been the same since that comment, and neither has their friendship or any other friendship in that school with him. My son now thinks his coach and his safety net at school, the principal and the officer, believe he is a racist bully. I did request to best friend's mother that coach apologize. To my knowledge, that was never done. Spring 2022, my son calls me from the school administration phone to tell me his library book was due. I asked, "Why didn't he call me from his personal phone?" He said, "I don't know. The teacher said she wanted me to call from this line so she could witness it. The book was not late. It was due the following day." March 10th, 2022, my son does not like his new haircut and skips class, giving him an immediate Saturday suspension, which I agree to, because skipping class is not okay. March 11th, there's a student walkout. No suspensions, to my knowledge, and the students I have spoken to. So emails began to ask the questions, that would confirm or deny what I've been told or seen. Coincidentally, the same officer was outside without walkout the same day as that, the same suspension officer. August 1st, the solicitor falsely accused my husband of being a liar, which has affected our business and my children in this district. September 29th, I spoke to supervisor of security, which directed me to Officer Scoog. He was very helpful to explain why my request for that video was denied, because it does not exist. He continues to say, "I've been wondering when someone was gonna ask me for it."
Your four minutes are up.
The walkout was out March 11th. The first mention of the video asking about it was March 23rd. The day of the walkout, Officer Potter was outside waiting outside. I'm gonna finish this sentence.
Your four minutes are up.
Your four minutes are up. I'm sorry, you're done.
Everybody gets four minutes in the public comment.
I'll be back every month, until this school season is over, until you hear me. Mr. Solicitor, you publicly called us a liar. Call us a liar. Nobody asked for the video. Not one person asked for the video, and he can go public and call me a liar?
402 Holiday Drive. Okay, Gretchen McGee.
I live at 3311 Carriage Circle, Murraysville, Pennsylvania. Here I am, once again, to talk about the coed bathrooms at the intermediate and primary school. We are just about four weeks into the school, and my eight-year-old, now nine-year-old, has had two issues using the bathrooms at school, which a normal person would think is pretty insane. Last year, while she was at the primary school, we met with the principal, who talked to my husband and myself about all the issues that were happening with the coed slash gender-neutral bathrooms. Some of those things were that they weren't clean, and that the children couldn't lock the doors, et cetera. After going through this conversation, we said that our daughter, who knows, by the way, that she's a girl, will not be using these unclean and unsafe bathrooms. The solution was for her to use the nurse's office bathroom. Upon entering the intermediate school this year, I emailed Mr. Buffon and asked that my daughter continue to use the nurse's room bathroom. Mr. Buffon didn't think this was a good solution, and offered for her to use the women's bathroom by the offices. We weren't really thrilled with the solution, because Franklin Regional will not put a policy in place about people using bathrooms that coincide with their biological gender. But my husband and I decided to go along with the solution. About two weeks into the school year, I get a call saying that there was an issue at the school with the garage doors closing, and that my daughter couldn't get to the correct bathrooms, and if she could use the coed bathrooms. I said yes. That afternoon, she came home and complained all afternoon as to how bad those bathrooms smell, and that in every single stall that she tried to use, there was urine all over the toilets. On September 12th, just three weeks into this school year, my daughter went to enter the girl or the women's bathroom and found a boy in there. She left immediately, and she, as has been taught by her parents, told her teacher. I appreciate that her teacher took action and informed Mr. Buffon. I appreciate that Mr. Buffon and the security team reviewed the video footage and contacted me and discussed it. Here's what I don't appreciate. I don't appreciate that I have to teach my three girls what to do if there's a boy in the girls' bathroom. I don't appreciate the lack of the policy by the school district to protect my daughters and everyone else's daughters. I don't appreciate that young children, kindergartners, are starting school with these gender-neutral coed bathrooms, and that they are made, that this makes them to be normal. This is not normal. It's not right. So everyone who is watching this, please come and speak, whether you have kids... What your tax dollars are paying for. If you don't want to speak in front of the school board, send emails to every single school board member voicing your opinions about boys and girls being in the same bathrooms. And the way things are going currently, stand, currently stands that they will be changing their clothes in locker rooms together. This is not acceptable.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I think it's an important terminology clarification, if this is part of a public, a public meeting, that a coed bathroom is a bathroom that people of any gender will use in a closed area, where they go into a closed door, and there is a common clo, a common area in a closed door, and then user stalls in that door. What the elementary bathrooms are is an open common area, and then single-user doors, floor to ceiling. So they are single-user restrooms with an open common sink area. So I think the distinction is important if we are, if this is a public meeting, whether people agree or disagree with that, that is their prerogative, but it's important to have the correct distinction that these are single-user bathrooms with a common area, not mul, not a multi-gender bathroom, where it's a multi-user bathroom.
And they are single-use bathrooms with a common area. Thank you.
But they do have the right to have them clean.
They do have the right to have them cleaned, yes.
Okay. The other thing I would like to ask, Mr. President, is, is historically, we have people come to that microphone, and from a perspective of the board, once they quit speaking and sit down, we never hear anything about that. We don't hear from the solicitor, what's happened with that. We don't hear from the president or the administrator. And I think the board needs to be told. Otherwise, what's the point of someone coming and standing in front of us? If it just dies at the moment, they sit back in their chair. Just one board member's opinion.
I'd be glad to answer that.
Mr. Yan, I have to say that I'm in total agreement with you. So thank you for voicing your, some of our opinions. Thank you.
I'd like to add my two cents to that. I don't know what our policy is as far as cleaning, and how often that these restrooms get looked at to be clean, but I think we need to do and take a look at that, because I have been approached many times in the community by members, and obviously, the little girls don't want to sit down on a seat that's totally soaked. I 100% agree. I have granddaughters. I wouldn't want that either. So I think maybe what we need to do is internally, is take a look at how often these things are monitored, whether it's after like a recess. It's a pain, but we have no choice, I think, but to clean.
We have increased our cleaning of those restrooms significantly. I don't know what the cycle is, but the, the cleaning process has, was addressed from year one, when those complaints first came out. And I know that the cycle, Dr. Prano...
I am, they're cleaned, they're, they are cleaned mid-morning, prior to lunch, and they're cleaned right after the lunch periods. And so they're cleaned twice throughout the day. Then again after school, of course. But they are single-user restrooms. I want to be very clear. Floor to ceiling, those restrooms do lock, and they're lockable, and... And if that happens, then there will be consequences that are dealt. That has not been reported to me that that has happened, but it doesn't mean I know everything that happens in the school district. With that being said, that has not been reported to me. Officer Scoog, you have, will you please approach your mic and tell us about the other situation, where there is a boy in the female restroom? What happened in that situation, if you're aware?
That, that young, I looked into that allegation. That young man did enter the boys' restroom by accident. Came out, his face was flushed. He was very upset at that point. He came running out of the bathroom and told everybody what had happened. Simply went in, came out of the one room and went into the wrong bathroom.
So he entered the female restroom...
Myself and Dr. Buffon investigated it, investigated it based on what was told to us, and totally entered the wrong bathroom by accident, yes. Now, with the bathroom, the main bathrooms by the gymnasium.
Thank you. Any other questions for Officer Scoog?
Officer Scoog, can you just verify that that paper clip does or does not work in opening up those bathrooms?
I cannot.
Okay, I mean...
She's told me about it. I've not heard that before.
Yeah, can you report back to let us know?
Absolutely.
Right, there is a, there is a way where you can, you can open those, it looks like with a screwdriver. Because you have to have an access edge. Those are passage lock, or, or, right.
Yes.
That's the one that's got the hole in the middle on the outside.
I believe it's just a slot on the outside.
Those, those are, those are bathroom locks, and they're made so that you can get in them if somebody's inside, can't get out.
In an emergency, somebody gets...
To defeat that is, you have to change the whole door lock. I mean, if, all you have to, anything with a, with a flattened point on it, just acts, it's like a little screwdriver. Opens the door right up.
That's what it's for.
That's probably not, maybe a good idea, especially in these bathrooms. However, if someone were to lock themselves in, or pass out, or whatever in there, you pretty much have to have that kind of a...
However, if someone is using a paper clip or whatever object to open that, that door, we can easily see who that was.
You can.
Yeah, and find out who that is and deal with that.
How do you see who was?
We, we actually, the common area around the sink, we can see who's in that area via camera. Obviously, there are not cameras in the restroom itself, but there are in that area. So you can see if someone...
The common area is covered by the camera?
Correct.
Okay.
So if we know a time, place, and location, we can easily verify that, and we would deal with that. That being said, I also want to ask Ms. Wolf, you did the minutes for the last meeting, you watched the video. There were claims that the, the videos were audited or edited from, based upon your review of that. I know I'm putting you on the spot.
There, there was some issues with the transmission. So there were times when it cut, the voices cut out, but I believe that was an issue here, because it happened on Channel 19 as well. We don't have any control over it. We don't do the recording, and we do not, we receive the recording from the municipality. We don't do anything to it. We just receive a, I receive a disc, and we receive it on a flash drive. That flash drive is what Brad uses to upload it to YouTube, but we have no editing capabilities for that, and we don't, we don't do anything to it. So whatever they give us is what we have. It's what's broadcast, and if you watch it on Channel 19, you will see, because I have, I've gone back and watched when I was waiting for us to get our copies. You can see sometimes the broadcast does go in and out, but I think it's because it's not in HD. So, and then when people are far enough away from the microphone, you don't even hear the voice as well. But yeah, there, we don't do any editing to the, to the videos. We upload them the way we get them.
Okay, any other statements?
If I may also, I mean, there was an accusation, I called somebody a liar at a meeting. I don't have any recollection of making that comment, but I will review the minutes from, or the tape from that meeting to see what was said. I don't recall ever having a discussion with Mrs. Chadwick.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I'm, that is probably correct, Gary. You know, I'm not intending it isn't correct. It's just that we can't leave stuff like that when...
I wasn't planning I was going to address it under...
You know, that's, this has got to be taken to, taken to ground.
No doubt about it. I mean, I, I wouldn't, I...
I don't either.
...in my demeanor, so. And I agree with you. A lot of times, especially when people are talking about their children, we do not, I personally do not comment, because I am protecting, even though they may be talking about their children, I do not want to talk about their children publicly. And I will continue to not talk about their children publicly, but when there are things that are materially or factually incorrect, your point is well-taken, and we will be addressing them, and addressing them directly. So I do appreciate that, and I understand. And however, I will continue to protect the dignity of, of children, because children are exactly that. We know adults make mistakes, and misjudge, and misstep, and we also know that children make mistakes, misjudge, and misstep. They don't, if that happens, they do not deserve public airing of their behavior. And, and so I would, like, in those types of situations, I'm not going to answer, because it makes me very uncomfortable, even when they mention those types of things, because that child shouldn't, I don't want that child to have that experience.
Thank you. Okay, Susan Engelfritz.
Good evening. Susan Elgin Fritz, Mayor Drive, Murraysville. I'm here this evening because I'm a bit frustrated. This is my third time speaking at a public comment meeting regarding teachers in the district giving our children, and when I say our children, I mean students in the district, surveys on asking which pronoun they wish to be referred to as. Are you following the PA Department of Education recommendation on gender issues, and how to incorporate this into our school district? And how far are you going to move towards a liberal ideology of equity and gender? The latest example is with the homecoming royalty, which was disappointing, because I feel was breaking long traditions. And I'm asking again, can you please create a policy where families can opt in for any discussion of gender issues? Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, that's it for public comments. Solicitor comments.
I have no further comment for public session.
Thank you. Okay, we're good, we're going to send agenda items. Mr. Flavio.
Good evening. The first agenda item for you is a yearly agreement with St. Vincent Prevention Projects. It is for our high school Friends Connect group, which is a peer relations group for students in the Life Skills Autistic Support Classroom, and... Mind with the agreement I presented last month, but we had the potential to add a third group for this school year, and it was determined that we were going to stick with our two groups. So that's why they were separated. So this would normally come to you in August.
Any questions for Mr. Flavio? Mr. Dr. Rogowski.
Good evening. On the agenda for your consideration this evening are two addendum items to our original contract to Presley Ridge. Last month, I brought you addendum number five, but as we were reviewing our records and Presley was reviewing their records, it seems as though that three and four during the two COVID years were not given to us for approval for our students that attended there. When you look at the cost, the cost is relatively the same. We did have students that attended. We just want to make sure that, for auditing purposes, we do have a signed executed agreement for those two years. When you look at the cost, I think they increased about $500 each year. It's something that we typically budget for with that increase, so it's no additional cost to the district, and it was something that we did have within our budget for those years. The original contract was approved in 2017, and so the only thing that's different is just the overall cost, if that does change from year to year, for students that need to attend that school.
Any questions for Dr. Rogowski? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Perry, gifts, grants and donations.
This month we have $307 to the Fund a Meal program from FR Staff and an anonymous donor.
Any questions on gifts, grants and donations? Local audit report, Mr. Perry.
Yes, this month we'll be presenting our, uh, financial statements and audit report for the year ended June 30th of 2021. Um, our independent external auditor, Mark Turnley, was not able to be here tonight due to a conflict with another meeting, but he will be here on October 17th at the regular voting meeting to present, uh, the report and answer any questions from the board. He did issue the unqualified opinion, which is the best opinion for both the financial statements and our single audit report, which is, uh, an accounting of federal funds, uh, that the district spent during that year. Um, and as I said, Mark will have more to say on October 17th.
Any questions on the audit report, Mr. Perry?
Thank you.
Perry. Okay. Personnel, Dr. Prano.
For your review on pages eight, nine and 10 in your packet are personnel actions, appointments and transfers, transfers under certified personnel, leaves of absence and substitutes under certified personnel, as well as support personnel, a leave of absence and approval of substitutes. And we continue to look for substitutes and will continue to look for substitutes for, in all areas. Appointments and tra, for supplemental personnel, you will see various club and, uh, sports and organization approvals, uh, appointments and transfers, as well as our winter coaches, as well as additional fall coaches. And then also activity club sponsors and re, uh, rescinding of a couple of activity club sponsors and a resignation under, for one of the coaches. So that is under personnel.
Okay. Uh, comprehensive plan, Dr. Prano.
So this is the first year of the future ready comprehensive plan. It was a new planning process for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Essentially, it's a shifting from a compliance model to a continuous improvement model. And when you look at it, it, so over the next three years until the next one is due, we will continuously be monitoring, uh, our plan and our progress toward our plan. And usually a plan has three to five areas of focus, uh, as this plan does as well. And so when, when you look at that process, continuous improvement, it's taking all of the various things that you're doing, but really looking at what are your core mission and you, and vision for the organization. So you're asking yourself, where do we want to go? Or you're asking us, asking yourself, where are we now? Where do we want to go? How will we get there? Who is responsible for getting us there? And how we will know we are making progress? And all of that is in your plan and the plan that you have there. Give me one second. No, I have, I have it. I have one with notes on it though. So that being said, you essentially, what happens through this process is you set the direction. What, what is, is our vision? And looking at what we've been experiencing over the last couple of years, our, whether it's COVID or societal issues or so forth, is coming to us with more diverse needs than ever. Academically, socially, emotionally, as well as in terms of their mental health. And so when we look at how do we accomplish our core mission, vision, values and goals, those are areas that are, we honestly want to improve the mental health of our students and we want to work to the best of our ability to remove those barriers for learning. And you have to do that in a way that is strategic, in a way that is purposeful, in a way that is based in research and requires support. So looking at that and assessing our needs, there's a process that we go through to get there in creation of the plan. After the approval of plan, we'll look to implement and we will continuously monitor that plan. And as we, and as we look at a plan, we know that if we took the plan and we stuck it on a shelf and we said we're going to implement it, and we didn't really evaluate that and realize that things are going to happen along the way where we have to add resources or change resources or adapt or modify, we're really not doing our job. And so this process is for us to look every year at what are our objectives? What are our goals? How are, how are we going to accomplish those objectives and goals? And, and what resources do we need to put into place to make that happen? And then looking at previous year, where do we hit the mark? Where didn't we hit the mark? And how do we get there? This process actually involves a lot of different stakeholders. And who are our stakeholders? There was a committee and was a rather large committee and there's some people in the audience that were on that committee. There are some board members that were on that committee, uh, as well as some administrators in the, in the room. But that committee consists of students, parents, community members and partners. We have Mrs. Ling who is here, uh, within municipality. Our mayor was actually one of the members of our comprehensive planning team. And so it consists of community members as well as the executive director or the director of the Murraysville campus of the WCCC because they are a community partner. We had teachers, educational specialists, principals, administrators and some board members. Essentially, there were three primary meetings. First one was March 8th and the focus was on educational values. And then essentially what people talked about as a large group, but more importantly is what broken into small groups, was what should learning look like? And the good news that came out of that is a lot of the things that we're talking about, where we have students solving real world problems, where we talk about our five Cs, uh, when we're talking about critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, communication and citizenship, that hit the mark with almost the entire room. And there was a lot of talk about how Pennsylvania assessments and the assessment systems, whether that's Keystone exams or PSSAs, really do not measure what our students have to know, understand and be able to do to be successful in life. And so tonight you heard the young lady speak. Things like National History Day are the things that people in this organization or in this community wanted to see more of. They wanted to see less things related to test prep. That being said, we, they are, there is also an acknowledgement from a data standpoint that our students should be able to read, write and, and do mathematics at grade level. And so April 2nd, we came back together again, focused on, on that data. And we looked at a needs assessment in terms of what do we need? What are our strengths? What are our weaknesses? Then on May 3rd, we came back together, wrapped up the things from March 8th and, and April 2nd and began the process of action planning, looking at what we have to do as a school system to meet the, the various needs of all students in our system. It ranged from remediation to enrichment. It ranged from, uh, basic daily, uh, coping skills to those students coming with significant mental health needs and how can we get there? That being said, one of the areas or topics that we spent a lot of time talking about was the mission statement. And there was a lot of discussion around components of the mission statement and shifting the mission statement to reflect more of our belief that we're meeting students where they are, supporting them in their growth and really looking at them individually, individually, uh, in terms of academics and in terms of the arts, athletics and citizenship. And so we ordered the mission, they, people ordered the mission statement to read, "We the Franklin Regional School Community strive for excellence, learning, individual growth, community achievement and citizenship in all we do." And so really that focus on the individual student and that customized learning experience was really at the heart of a lot of this, the discussion in regard to that component of the, of the mission statement. The next piece was around community achievement. And we talked about things that our community takes great pride in, whether that be the performance, the national recognition of our band, whether that's the achievement of our athletic teams, everything from state and WPAO championships to those teams that, that, that put on strong performances year in and year out, that may not win those championships, as well as even the individual accomplishments of people, as well as our national merit and our, our students who go on to accomplish tremendous things. But most importantly, citizenship. And when our students leave here, they're ready to go out and lead in, in our community and whatever community they choose to live in. The vision statement was also changed and it talked about those five Cs that our students eloquently talked about earlier. "We prepare students for success beyond high school by developing critical thinking skills, engaging in collaborative problem solving, practicing effective communication strategies, experiencing opportunities to be creative and promoting citizenship." And that whole piece around collaborative problem solving is giving our students an opportunity to work together, to solve real world problems, to gain, engage in challenging and rigorous work. Things that they find interested, things that inspire them, while still ensuring that our students have those basic academic skills that we referenced. That vision for learning isn't different from ensuring that all kids are able to meet the basic standards. So we talked about the values of the organization and we talked about at Franklin Regional Schools, we talked about honesty, integrity, appreciating and value, valuing the differences between all of us, creating a safe and supportive environment, contributing to the educational process of everyone, from students to, to our staff, to our community members, to having high expectations, to helping everyone learn and grow. And that, that learning isn't by invitation, it's by expectation. It's having an expectation that all students can learn and that we will do whatever we need to do to remove the barriers to learning that may exist for students. And that we are all lifelong learners and we are accountable. When I first came here a decade ago and went through the process of meeting with over 200 stakeholders, the foundational planks were something that came out of that process based upon the message that I heard from many people. And then those same foundational planks or concepts were taken to the board, who modified, changed, provided insight, who then took them again to the comprehensive planning group, who modified them even further and asked that they become part of our comprehensive plan. When we met around the foundational planks, a lot of the discussion talked about how we understand this. Why is it so wordy? We know what this means. Why does it have to be so descriptive? And part of that came down to the fact that people have really lived those and they became part of our discussions and what we were doing every, and so they modified those that really in a lot of places have similar meanings, but with better verbiage, easier to understand. So they still come down to the same five areas and that's striving to create a safe and healthy school culture and community, working to create a world-class educational system that develops life-ready students. And that's not test-ready students, that's life-ready students. Maximizing student potential in all areas. And we recognize it as a school system that we're committed to providing students experiences that are rich and rigorous and world-class in academics, the arts, athletics and citizenship. And then outstanding school community partnerships through effective and transparent communication. And finally, striving for fiscal integrity, efficiency and effective governance in all operational areas. And that's not something that you automatically just have. It's not a destination. It's something, these are things that you're always striving to do. And then when you're making decisions, these foundational planks really sit as the pillars to those, to support those decisions. And so out of that came three established priorities. And the first one, Franklin Regional School District remains committed to providing all students with a rigorous and diverse academic experience with appropriate support structures. These rigorous, flexible and supportive learning experience, experiences prepare our students for future success and create opportunities beyond the four walls of our classroom. It really supports what we're doing and people do not want it to be lost, that we will continue to evolve and continue to grow in this area and it will continue to be a focus of what we do. The next two areas are areas where we really had some work to do in terms of the development, in terms of these priorities. Franklin Regional School District is committed to building appropriate systems of academic support throughout the district. Through these support systems, all students will be insured of receiving the appropriate levels of support and enrichment from both their regular classroom teachers and educational specialists. And so it's really having those, that specialist work with classroom teachers so that students get what they need in terms of remediation or enrichment or learning experience based upon real world problems or their areas of interest from both the regular classroom teacher as well as the specialists. And so it's building those systems within our, our school and providing a level of professional development and support for our staff to make sure that that becomes a reality. The third area deals specifically with school-based mental health and behavioral health services. And last, last month we approved for social work services from the, from UPMC. And as you can tell, we're already working toward a lot of these, these types of things. And it's Franklin Regional School District is committed to continuously improving school-based mental health and behavioral health services in an effort to foster a school environment where all students can succeed and barriers to student success are minimized. And so those are our priorities. Over the next three years, that's where we will be focusing our attention. It's where we'll be focusing our efforts. One is to continue that vision that we have for learning, keep moving it forward, while at the same time, making sure that our support systems and our enrichment systems in all classrooms are strong and that our staff have the support that they need to be able to meet the diverse needs of all students. And finally, knowing that our, our students come to, come to school with challenges, whether it's academic, but also behaviorally and academically, that we need to work to enhance our systems to promote pro-social behavior as well as minimize disruptions and misbehavior in classrooms and in our hallways. And so those are our priorities. So here are some of the strategies and this is not all the strategies. These are some of the strategies we're talking about to support this work. Uh, one of the things, earlier this year, we moved to the creation of some MTSS coordinators at the primary school and the intermediate school. We're also looking, uh, with ESSR money to expanding, then, expanding those services also into the middle school to create those same support structure for students in K-8 in mathematics, as well as language arts, to ensure that our students have what they need academically. The second piece is really around, uh, when I first came into the profession, we talked about the reading wars. Is it whole language or, or is it the traditional phonics based? We know that there, reading is rocket science. We know that, of course, there's an art to teaching reading, but there's also a science to teaching reading. When we talk about the National Reading Panel, we talk to, we talk about the five, five big ideas of reading. Phonemic awareness, and that's how a student hears language or hears sounds. Phonics, the ability to produce those sounds. When we talk about fluency, and that's the rate that a student reads as well as the intonation that they read with. And then we talked about their vocabulary and we also talked about comprehension. When we look at those five big ideas of reading, there is science behind that and there is a lot of research behind that. And what, one of the things we know is that colleges and universities do not do, always do a tremendous job of teaching the science of reading to teachers coming out of school. And so one of the things that we have done and we're doing is we are providing over the next two years, every K-5 ELA teacher with intensive professional development in, in letters. Language, it's, language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. And that we're going to support them through the specialist I just talked about, as well as some coaching, uh, to implement these research-based strategies in all classrooms. The other piece around the MTSS is when we look at students who have The other piece around the MTSS is when we look at students who have need, it's how do we provide them the support to make sure that they master these skills so that they're able to read at grade level. But we also know that a lot of our students soar. And that's one of the things when we looked at the needs analysis, we have a, our rate of students scoring as an advanced level is extremely high. We need to do something different for those students as well. But we also know we have too many students in mathematics and reading who own the PSSA or even our local assessments who aren't achieving where we need them to. We need to put those support structures in place. We're also talking about when we look at that model, the creation, and we started this summer through the using ESSER funds to support summer school programming. And we're also going to be doing after-school programming, and that is also part of this as we work to create that MTS system, which involves identifying appropriate local assessments, which involves looking at data analysis processes for our teachers to look at students and be able to see how they're doing, as well as prescribe or choose the appropriate interventions as well as enrichment experiences for students. There's a lot of collaboration. When we talk about that collaboration piece of the five Cs, we expect the same from our staff. The next piece of that is looking at creating a positive behavioral intervention system at our primary school, intermediate school, and middle school. And the middle school is actually looking at full implementation this year. We're looking at pilot programs at our elementary to elementary level schools. And I know that Dr. Santa Mont has done a lot of work around this and a lot of professional development, but with her staff. And we're also doing the same in terms of the development of these systems at the other schools. And the next piece, we talked about the ongoing support for enhancing social work and school-based mental health services in all all district schools. So those are the four of the evidence-based practices. But we're also looking at different ways to make sure that our students are life-ready. And we're talking about things like career labs, so to, and it's like a preparation lab at the high school level to help students assess their career interests as well as develop some some life-ready skills, as well as the expansion of those opportunities within their own classrooms to engage in project-based learning as well as, we've heard the science classes and they went through the first wave of professional developments around phenomena-based learning where we take complex scientific concepts and really take them to the students' level for in areas that they're going to interact with every day. And the goal is, I think we've all sat through classes where we've heard it, we've understood it, we haven't remembered it because it didn't apply to us, where we're taking complex concepts and getting students to look at that in ways that they see it every day and they experience it every day and that they engage in solving real-world problems around it. And so that's some of the work that we're doing at the secondary level and will continue to do. And so those are our evidence-based strategies. So next steps. The plan has to be on on display for 28 days for review and and we will, you'll hear a little in a little bit from Ms. Ms. DeFolvio, as well as Dr. Santa Mont about the professional development plan and the induction plan, which are also coming up for 28-day review. So those, we'll ask you to vote on October 17th to put them on a 28-day review. Then from October 17th through November 14th, we will be accepting written public comment. And we're asking for the approval of those plans on November, at your November 14th meeting. And then we will submit that plan to Pennsylvania Department of Education. Our due date for submission is on November 30th, 2022. So that's essentially the comprehensive plan. I'm open for any questions. Yes?
This is for perhaps you and and Mr. DeFolvio regarding the social emotional learning, social emotional interventions and mental behavioral health. Can you talk a little bit about the parental involvement? You're not going to be giving students therapy or anything like that without parents knowing. Can you take us through the process of when you see a red flag and 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 then how these different support systems are going to come into play and and how you involve the parents with this?
Sure. Family engagement is critical right from the very beginning, anytime we're working with students. So we have structures in place through our counseling departments in every building, our our teams of teachers and other staff, our nurses, our administrators who work on our student assistance program teams. We have our WICSE SAP liaison who also engages with that team.
I'm sorry, which liaison?
Our WICSE, I'm sorry, Westmoreland Case Management. And so we have those structures in place that have existed for quite a while. So anytime a student has any type of need, a parent is immediately contacted prior to anyone else really intervening by the teacher initially to express, you know, here's what we're seeing, this is what we think might be helpful. And that teacher and the team that is located in that building, they work together with the parents because parents are hugely critical piece. As a parent myself, I understand that, you know, often I'll, I'll know my child best and I'll need the help of supportive professionals. But we all that we do is really a team approach. So when we add people to those teams, they become integrated and that's kind of what's happening right now with our University of Pittsburgh. Social services liaisons are getting to know the staff, they're getting to know the administrators, they're getting to know the children and just really kind of understanding the culture of our buildings. And as they begin to have any contact with children, they will have reached out to parents prior.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Pirino? Okay, of course, the induction, Dr. Santa Mont.
So I'd like to just touch a little bit on our induction program. As as we know, that studies show that the single greatest factor on student learning is educator quality. And so we want to start with a strong induction program. And when looking at a strong induction program, we can, it leads to teachers using instructional practices to enhance student achievement. Teachers offering challenging work that reaches a diverse group of learners, creating curriculum that is standards-based and created, creating curriculum goals created by the professional. And so our induction program looks is a three-year induction program. And according to the state of Pennsylvania, they have a few requirements for the induction program, including a needs assessment, reaching out to new teachers to make sure they are aware of the educator effectiveness model and also making sure that they're aware of the Pennsylvania Code of Conduct. And we include all of that in our induction, but the induction process also includes at the start, the first year, they create the or they complete the needs assessment. And then also in the first year, they're getting out and they're seeing veteran teachers, teacher leaders teach in the classroom. They're paired up with a mentor who works with them on, it's a mentor that is part of the same subject area so that they're working with them on the curriculum to make sure that that curriculum is, they understand the curriculum and that they're teaching the curriculum. They're meeting with their mentors weekly and going over different areas such as things that are going on in the building, things that are going on with the curriculum. And then we also meet on five to six times a year for the first year to go over how to include those five Cs in instruction. And we're utilizing our teacher leaders to do that. So our teacher leaders are presenting with the new inductees and the mentors. They're all working together. And so in fact, last week, our new inductees dissected sheep brains and they went through the whole process in looking at how the five Cs worked with that, but then taking it a step further and engaging in a discussion with a social studies teacher leader and a science teacher leader on how to include the five Cs within their subject level and in their classroom and then how to incorporate some cross-curricular things. So how could you include or how could your lessons work with a dissection of the sheep brain if that were the case and looking into those types of things? Each month, we have a different C that we are focusing on and our teacher leaders are presenting and working with those. They get involved with working with robotics and how to tie robotics into the curriculum and looking at creative problem solving and looking at critical thinking and how to include citizenship and and how to work with the students. And that's all in year one. Along with that, the principals are given all of the needs assessments and able to work with the mentors and work with the teachers on the areas that they feel that that they need to excel in and they need to get more information in. Then also each of the new inductees works with their principal to choose an area to focus on in observations, an area of the teacher effectiveness model. So in year one, they're looking at domains one and two. So that kind of prep work and that on-the-scenes work inside the classroom. And how then after they sit down and do a pre-observation with the principal, pre-observation talk, and then the principal goes in and looks for precisely what they were talking about, the stuff from that education educator effectiveness model that's going on in the classroom and then how to then excel at that and move forward and meeting throughout the year with the new teachers on how to do that. In the second year, our second year inductees are reading When You Wonder Your Learning and that touches on the five Cs as well and going into some book talks, again, led by the teacher leaders. The second year, they're focusing on those domains three and domains four in the teacher effectiveness model. And then still looking at the principal going into the classroom and then working together on how to excel at those and get better at those. And then in the third year, there's more pull away from the mentor and more push-in with the principal. And in that third year, it's a lot of meetings with the principal and then also working and circling back with the teacher leaders to help present at those first two years of induction and to work together. And so getting into a lot of classrooms, seeing a lot of veteran teachers and really working on how to improve instructional practices through the five Cs.
Questions for Dr. Santa?
With the with the elementary realignment that just happened over the past year, was did that present any significant changes with what you were previously doing with the induction plans at that level? Or do you, did you have time to really assess how how well things or what changes were needed in that process? Or do you anticipate having to maybe tweak tweak what you're doing? Or did you have enough time with this plan to put that in place and evaluate maybe what changes took place over that realignment over the last from last year?
Actually, yes, we what we did was we realigned or we did a reevaluation of our induction program at the start of last year. Some things that we were looking at in understanding that just K to 12, as new teachers are coming in, how important it is that we get them into classrooms, see our teacher leaders, see veteran teachers and see how those, how we want things to go so that when they are in the classroom teaching, that right away, when we pull them into our district, we're saying, you know, this is what we want to see. We want to see students looking at real-world experiences. We want students up and moving around and being engaged and looking at that creative problem solving and being problem finders, not just problem solvers. And so that was one of the things that we sat back and reflected on and really thought about what we were doing K to 12 and with the new realignment. And then also, you know, wanting to include all of our STEM and the different, the robotics programs that we have and how do, how can we include that and mesh that together and really pull all of our teachers together so that, you know, math isn't just focusing on math all of the time, but how can we tie ELA and math together? How can we tie science and math and science and ELA together? And how can we bring social studies into all of those things and really looking at that? And that's where we went with as we started to talk about the realignment and moving forward with a different style of induction.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, professional development, Ms. DeFolvio.
So professional development, our, our plan came out of our comprehensive planning process and it is directly related to what Dr. Santa Mont just talked about and a lot of what Dr. Pirino talked about as well. So we took the feedback from our teacher leaders and we have teacher leaders in every department, every content area. And we really listened to what they were telling us. And one of the challenges that they have is aligning their work K to 12, becoming further experts in their fields and finding out what does a high school teacher know what a kindergarten teacher is doing in their content area? And we are, we were hearing from them that they really wanted this time to work together. They wanted to be able to find professional opportunities that built their level of expertise in addition to really igniting their love of that content area. So this professional development plan reflects those desires from our teacher leaders and our staff at large. So what you'll see is a lot of department-level work. And we will be able to throughout this year and moving forward, report back out to you what that looks like. Because in writing, it may say the science department is working together on those four days. Well, that's true, but in addition to to that time together, they are working with Liz Mira, our consultant that Dr. Pirino referenced. We've already had two days with her. So they are going to look at how to align their K to 12 science curriculum related to those new NGSS standards. We have, another example is our arts department performing visual, musical teachers who are working with our Arts Ed Collaborative that we've worked with in the past, developing our creative arts curriculum and some of our other curriculas. So they are going to be going to an event on October 10th that will allow them to connect with regional artists in southwestern Pennsylvania. That could result in artist-in-residence programs in our district and other opportunities. So that's really specific to what they're interested in and will help them grow their connections within the community. Another example is, again, Dr. Pirino mentioned, our letters training, our science of reading is critical for our K to five teachers are of ELA to be all on the same page. And it's all back connected to that MTSS process and really providing students exactly what they need. We have our nursing staff working through CPR and first aid, which you would, that makes sense, but they're also going to spend time together aligning what happens in all four buildings so that we know that we're providing services that are making sense and aligned to the requirements and the care for students. I could talk about every single area, but what we'll do is save that for the teachers to come, the teacher leaders and their their peers to come and share with you what they're learning and what they're looking to implement. So our hope is that over the next several years, we will have this K to 12 alignment that can provide not only the support in the the structures that Dr. Pirino mentioned for students who may be struggling, but also in addition to that, what are those opportunities that students may have as they move through K to 12 that they don't move from one building to another and say, well, I already learned this? Those teachers are going to know what's been taught and they're going to be able to work with outside community partners to partner with them to provide experiences that are really career-based and excite our students as much as as the staff is right now. So we're really looking forward to this. You'll also find our PBIS work, our Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, our work around our requirements for special education and gifted education. We have a trauma-informed training that is provided by Penn State and that is an asynchronous training that is required and that is a new training this year that that anyone can participate in at their own time. Lastly, I will mention, we have, we partner with ASCD, the Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development, I think that's the D. That we have four courses related to assessment and sparking creativity. So teachers can choose those opportunities as well, and those are fully asynchronous opportunities. So we have a large majority of our teaching staff who is choosing to work together as departments. So we're really excited about that work and we'll be sharing lots more to come.
More or less a comment. It's really impressive, the continuity over the past few years. It's really impressive, the continuity over the past few years that, that Franklin Regional has purposely driven. I believe it started in the Curriculum Committee where previously it was done chunking the elementary school and the middle school and the high school. And, you know, the right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing. So by, by creating in, in the Curriculum Committee, I believe, historically it had been chunked. But now you can see the continuity between K through 12, which is significant. So I, I commend all of you for doing that. It's, it's necessary. My only concern is, is, is with the assessments and how the assessments don't align K-12. But that's, you know, that's on the PDE. I don't know what we can do about that, but, or...
You know, I think the important part is to take that as a point in time. And we have lots of other ways that we measure student success and achievement. And we are going to be working on really kind of finding ways to express that and show that and highlight that in all areas. And I, I just, I thought of something while you were speaking as well that one of the things that, as Dr. Saint Amant was talking about, our teacher leaders, this is a, a critical piece because it has been separated by level. So we are working to realign some of that so that teacher leaders are able to really support the teachers in their buildings and work as team members. So we will be looking at some realignment of that teacher leader structure as well moving forward with input from this process during this school year.
And I was thinking the same thing with, you know, mentioning the Curriculum Committee. You know, as we start to work together, we haven't really talked much in Curriculum Committee meetings yet, but starting to look at the and identify what are the things of most need with that K-12 alignment. I see this as, you know, a really good feedback tool from the teachers, from teacher leaders to identify places where that can happen and you can update and maybe not even go through a whole curriculum process, but an update or a tweak. Because we've talked about them being fluid documents and continuous, you know, things to use as opposed to just something we do put on a shelf for five years and then pull it back off and redo it. So I, I see this as a potential really good development tool for feedback in that type of committee process to really streamline how we address those problems and get the, get new ideas and creativity from the people who are actually doing it in the school as opposed to ideas coming from outside in.
Right. When you look at the old curriculum cycle process, we were letting teachers get together K-12, 6-12, whatever it was, when they were hitting a certain point in that curriculum cycle, that five or six-year curriculum cycle. This, this new way of doing professional development takes that away. And it, it definitely flattens that out. We may only be asking to spend resources at a certain point in time, but we need to continuously, we were saying they should be continuously reevaluating those resources and any needs they may have. But we weren't giving them the opportunity to meet together to do that work. And so I think that's where the excitement has been building because now we have that time and the energy can be spent in the direction that we need it to be.
Anybody else?
I just want to personally take the opportunity to thank both Dr. Saint Amant and, and Ms. DeFolvio as well as Dr. Rogowski for their work in creating these, developing these two plans and coordinating these efforts. And you'll see that there is coordination between all three of these plans with a common vision and to supporting our mission, vision, values, and goals for the district. And so that's a testament to, to their work and the work of a lot of people within the organization as well as all the people who volunteered to serve on the committee. So I just want to take the opportunity to thank them and all those involved.
Thank you. Any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Ed. Second by Branson. All favor, aye. Please motion carries.